Closer. I'm okay. Testing. Do I still need to keep talking? One more time?
I'd like to welcome everybody to the July 14th regular meeting of the Bland County School Board. With that, Buttry, if you do the invocation.
Lord, we thank you for this wonderful day that we've enjoyed. God, we ask this evening, Lord, that you would come into this place and help us to do the business of Bland County Public Schools. Lord, help us to work together in unity with the wisdom of God, just not men, but Lord with you. God, I pray this evening, Lord, that your blessings, Lord, would be upon our students, our staff, and our parents. Lord, as we work forward toward this fall season of going back to school. God, I pray, Lord, that you would be with us this evening, and we give you praise in Jesus' name.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Aye.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have the minutes to be approved of the June 9th regular meeting. Any comments on the minutes of that meeting?
I have a motion to approve if no.
Second.
I'll make the motion.
Yeah.
I made the motion. Four.
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 Four. And we have the minutes of the June 23rd work session.
Second.
Four.
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 Four. Has anybody sent anything in for public comment? See, nothing for public comment. Okay, the next item on the informational agenda is the financial report. The school fiscal year ends at the end of June and starts at the beginning of July, so we've just started a new year. Last year was very different than most years because of the schools closing and a lot of the are called flow-through where you do certain things and then you're paid for accomplishing that. Different grants, those type of things such as the science programs, and that could not take place. So for the year, we ended up receiving $151,109 less than budget. Could not do the actions which justified us getting that money. However, on the expenditure side, since the school was shut down for a period of time, we did have reduced costs. And the costs were reduced by $486,823. So that leaves us a remainder for the year of $335,719, which we hope we can roll over into this year because we will have a number of costs this year due to COVID. And also, we've already been told by the state we'll be seeing some reduction in funds. So everybody worked really hard last year to make all the adjustments as they were needed, and the year came out very positive for us. And it should give us some money to cover these additional costs in the 2020-2021 school year. Any questions on the finances? Okay, the next thing is the new property management agreement, which has been signed with JDM Services. This agreement covers normal maintenance, it covers custodial, it covers lawn care and landscaping, those type of things, and also covers snow removal. Darney is here to talk to us briefly there and worked very closely getting this thing kicked off. And we've got high expectations and have already seen some nice improvements. With that, Ms. Darney would like to speak. Do we need to get her a microphone? Microphone.
Mr. Mead and board members, first, we want to thank you for having the faith in John Melvin and Melvin Enterprises and JDM Services to take on this new venture. We're excited to be here. We've already started with mowing and weed eating and trimming up things. We've started painting. We have worked on the parking lot over at Bland in conjunction with VDOT and an engineer to make sure that the drainage was received. You're welcome to go by. We welcome any comments from Mr. Mead or Mr. Sheppers or of any of the board members because we want to make a positive impression and we want to work with you. You won't only see me, but also Kirby Lambert will be joining JDM shortly, and he will be in charge of maintenance and making sure that everything is going as it should be. Our concentration right now has always been on the outside, and we look forward to starting Monday. We'll be coming inside. So we have a lot of things in mind. You know, these are our kids. You know, they're not your kids. They're my kids too. And John has always felt, you know, he was born and raised in Bland County, and he wants to make a difference. And I think that that's possible if everyone works together. Just a few things that we've been doing. We're doing some landscaping. If you haven't been by the school board office, it's had a major renovation on the outside. We look forward to going inside soon and doing some cleaning projects and things like that to get ready for the new school year. We repaired the ramp up to your sidewalk. It was cracked and busted. We've swept parking lots. We've been pressure washing. We're striping parking lots back. We're going to be doing some paving at the elementary school. We've trimmed trees. The boys are really enjoying pressure washing. At least it's cool out there when they're doing that. We worked on some bandroom renovations. We're in the process of completing that project. We've done front steps over at Bland Elementary. They are clear now. They're pretty color of concrete. So, and we painted doors. They're pretty color of blue. We've done some things down at the sports complex. Painted the door, put in a door lock, trimmed around the fence. My pet peeve was leaves over in that one corner. Well, those are gone. So, you know, we want to work with you to succeed. We're staffed at about 90%. I've got one other position to fill, and then it'll be at 100%. So most of those people, if they did not, if they were working with the county or with the school board, we tried to retain those people because they're already vetted and they know the buildings. And they're very forthcoming with information that's helpful for us coming in and not knowing the buildings. Like I said, next week, we'll start inside the buildings and we're going to get ready for whatever happens with the school openings and however you do that. But if you have any questions, we welcome you to call. You can call the office over at Bastian and leave a message, and John or I one will call you back. If you catch us out in public, that doesn't matter either, just let us know what you need us to do. Kirby will be, he's going to be a big asset to us. I am excited that he's decided to accept the position. He comes with a lot of knowledge and a lot of training. So again, we're excited and we want to thank you for the opportunity to start this new endeavor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here.
I think the one thing we want to look at is make sure that we have good communication just for sporting events, to let you guys, we want a good contact, and I think Tyler's a good one for sporting events, you know, for nighttime basketball games. That way you guys know what's going on. We want you guys to know what's going on in every building whenever. That way you know where to be, what you need to be doing.
And that would be excellent.
Make sure you get your, you work on that and you know who you need to get in contact with and let us know names of people too.
Okay, and always, you know, we have, Lord, I think it was 10 or 12 years experience with VDOT rest areas and property management. So we do not come in as not knowing what we're doing. So we came with some experience under our belts, and I always feel like if you can work with VDOT in Richmond, you can work with anybody. Does anyone have any questions? I'll be glad to answer anything that you have.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you guys very much.
We're excited.
Very much.
Thanks for coming on.
Thank you. And we plan on attending, you know, every board meeting. You will see a representative from JDM Services here.
Great.
Great. Great.
Okay, updates, Mr. Mead?
I've got a few, Mr. Chairman. Of course, the reopening of school, we'll talk about it in depth later. But I'd like to personally thank the task force committees that we put together that developed this plan. We've met three or four times throughout the last six weeks developing these plans so we can present them to you tonight. But the task force committee is comprised of teachers, teacher assistants, bus drivers, librarians, administrators, and we took, and board members. We had a board member on each task force committee, so we had some input from the various stakeholders in the county. So I thank you. School board office outside is beautiful right now. I mean, my gosh, the work that's been done. I ask you to go by and take a look at it. They've nearly completed the front part where the flag is. It's a great job. I really look forward to working with Ms. Darney, welcome aboard Mr. Lambert, and my friend John Melvin. And what Ms. Darney said is true. John has his heart with the kids in this county. And it's refreshing to hear him talk about our students. Mr. Grimm's unpacking. He wasn't here tonight because I failed to tell him to be here. So blame me for his absence. I'm sorry. Got a lot on my mind right now. But he has met, I guess, by now probably close to all of his teachers. He called them in and had one-on-one meetings. He's supposed to do that this week. I don't know if he's completed that or not. I know he started yesterday with Ms. Lambert was his first one, so I think that went real well. She bragged on him, so I'm glad that's working out. Dr. Hopkins is working out details with our dual enrollment at WCC and Governor's School. We have some work there left to do. As we move in through this fall, I'm sure there'll be other issues that come up with Tech Center, Career Tech Center and these kind of programs that's not housed on campus. So we'll have to try to match schedules as closely as we can. I brought you examples of calendars, and I'll pass those around so you can take a look at it. Don't know, we don't know what's going to happen tomorrow as far as the way the reopening of schools goes, but it's a couple of looks at calendars of how it would look if we started after Labor Day. Not saying we would, but just to know that I have those if we need them. And I'll pass those around so you take a look at them. We can discuss them at the next meeting, or you want questions now, I'll be glad to handle those if I can. So, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have until we start talking about our plan.
Okay, Ms. Hopkins, would you like to say anything? Okay, thank you. School board members, Philip?
I just want to share this evening that if ever there's been a time in our school system and in our community that we all work together, now's the time. I realize that there's going to be things within our community and our staff and everywhere that folks may not like, things that you will like. And, but during this time, over the last few months, we've all got to be flexible. And I just want to share with everybody, now's the time for us to work together to make things as best as what we can make them to be because the future is unknown. But I'd like to quote Helen Keller for just a moment, who said, "Alone, we can do so little, and together, we can do so much." So whether that's with the county administration, whether it's with BCA, our teachers, our students, and on our school board, as well as with the administration at both schools, let's work together to complete the job and to educate our children in Bland County.
Sharon?
I just think that always we're so fortunate to have the people that we do have to work with, and I think all of us will and shall work together. I mean, you know, it's just like everything's new to all of us, and it's not just us, you know, it's everybody around us, so we'll just dive into it all together, I guess.
Jane?
I just want to thank JDM for coming on board with us and for everything that they've done so far, and appreciate you guys and the impact that you're going to have on the schools, and appreciate your dedication. And thanks for all the administrative, Dr. Hopkins and Scott, and welcome Mr. Grimm. He's not here tonight, but it's just going to be a long year. It's going to be, it's going to be a lot of questions. There's going to be a lot of things that's going to happen. People's going to scratch their heads. And everything's going to be fluid, you know, to use a buzzword, it's going to be fluid, and all the plans that we have in place are going to be movable. We don't know what's going to happen, so just everybody, please be patient with schools. Everything we do is in the best interest of the kids, always. That's number one. The kids and then our staff, it's always in their best interest. And just because you see it on social media doesn't mean it's true.
That's right.
Hopefully, people out there will remember that, so that's it.
The most frustrating thing that's going on right now is all the uncertainty, and it makes it very hard to plan anything. Mr. Mead and I talked when we left school, the last school year, and we were forced to shut down, and we were talking about things. And I said, "My hope is just that when the next school year comes, we can go back normal." But it's obvious that's not going to happen, and we're living very much a day-to-day environment. Virginia was able to go into Phase 3 and was at a situation where cases were in the range of 600 per day. Now it's back up to close to 1,000 a day. So it's a possibility that the state may not even remain in Phase 3 for an extended period of time here. So we've been very lucky in Bland County in that we've been relatively unaffected. There've been three cases identified in Bland County since the pandemic started, and we've had no cases related to Bland County Public Schools. So all of those things are critical in the decisions we make as we move forward. And while we can't take the risk, the full risk out of anything, because risk is part of life. You have a risk every time you get in a vehicle or anytime you do anything. We want to make sure that we do it in such a way that risk is minimized and that we keep the students in mind, but also the staff, the teachers, the custodians, the cafeteria workers, everybody in mind as we do this. So we'll be talking about some plans today, and these plans, like everything else we're talking about, are fluid, and they're based upon certain things being in place. And if Phase 3 goes back to Phase 2, the plan has to be modified. Cases appear in the county, ramp up, they have to be modified. So everything, I want you to know that we will react, and we will react quickly if conditions change. With that, we'll move into the action agenda. The first item in the action agenda is to approve payments. Does anybody have any questions on any of the payments?
There was, see, there was a $2,600 to Beth Cochran. I think that was help at the board office, right? And I'm taking it that the $10,000 for Dudley was for land.
With that, if I could have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the payments.
Second.
Mr. Bailey?
Four.
Mr. Buttry?
Four.
Ms. Puckett? Mr. Sheppers?
Four. O and M projects, we had a, did a lot of projects last year, and O and M projects are capital projects that are over $5,000. We had 15 projects in trying to, I'll say, keep these aging facilities operational for our students and spent $424,061. For 24061, over 15 projects. All the projects have now terminated. We have no open projects, O and M. And we'll be working with JDM to determine what projects and also as looking at what funds we have to manage projects. Just show the cost of keeping these older facilities up. Like I said, this is in addition to custodial work. This is in addition to normal maintenance. There was $424,000 spent on keeping the building operational. Next item is Bland County High School Language Art Textbooks. Scott, you want to say something about that or?
Every year, we're, we have a textbook fund that's separate from what what we usually pull our monies out of. Textbook fund, whatever money we have left goes to the county, I believe. It stays in the county. When we need it, we draw from that. We have teachers that need textbooks. That's what this is about. These language art textbooks, we're actually late getting them, aren't we? So we're going to make it right and try to get her some textbooks and rest of the language.
So we need a motion to approve?
Can somebody give us details about which one the schools need? What's the difference?
We used to do every seven years, right?
Basically, seven years is when you, when the new textbook cycle comes around. And the state of Virginia actually eliminates the ones that don't match our curriculum. So the ones we get to choose from have been gone through by the state of Virginia, so then we choose which one fits our students the best. So it's a seven-year cycle.
So there's a five-year bid in here for $49,361?
Was that just for the five-year that we were going to be able to use the
the other component of that? That's not actually just the textbook?
That's the online portion of that?
Right. That's the student access and.
And then the seven years, $56,822.
There's also consumables, textbooks too that you use.
I guess this is clear to us. Are we approving one or the other or?
We have to choose?
Yeah.
So which one do they need?
Which one do you want?
Seven year. I'll make a motion. We go with the seven-year contract?
I second.
I mean, are we going to, can we, I'd like to have a little more discussion if that would be okay, just to ask. So in seven years, we're going to replace these textbooks again?
That's the way we always do. Yeah, that's the cycle that we follow all the time.
Well, we're behind a year on the cycle, so.
Replaced.
So we're behind a whole cycle, so we're behind four, seven years, so we're, so it's needing to be replaced.
So we need to probably do the seven-year?
Yeah.
Yes. Mr. Bailey?
Four.
Ms. Puckett?
Four.
Mr. Buttry?
Four.
Mr. Sheppers?
Okay, now the tough one, return to school plan.
Okay, Chairman, I'll go, I'm going to go through the plan. And let you, parents know and people watching, that this plan will, if approved, will be posted on our Facebook page and webpage probably tomorrow morning. It, look for that if you have, if you want to see anything that I think I have missed here. As you all know, in March 13th, what happened to our school year? It pretty much came out that we were going to be out for two weeks, and then it went, I think, March 23rd is announced we'd be out for the rest of the year. I can only say great things about our teachers. Quickly, they got everything together. They got virtual learning, online learning. They got hard copies together to get instruction for our kids for the rest of the school year. And so now we have a plan. If we have to go back to Phase 2, our teachers are ready for it. So that's the positive part of this. We've come around a whole lot, thanks to a lot of good teachers, a lot of good principal guidance, and that's what led to us putting this plan together. Now, the. Now, the, the governor spoke today and he has decided to leave us in Phase Three. So we are still remaining in Phase Three. And we'll follow the phase guidance for Virginia schools as communicated by the governor concerning the implementation and timeline of the phases. The information is going to be communicated to employees, students, and parents. And we'll do the same type of communication we've been doing unless you feel like we need to do a better job of how we're communicating this information to parents and students and teachers. You want to say something, Mr. Betri? I can just see it.
We always need to do a better job. Always.
Communication.
Human communication is, is the beast of all this.
Point taken, sir. I'll try to do my best to improve that. Social distancing has, we're bound with the facilities we have. And the social distancing is, has really been a complicated issue for our task force committees. When we talk about the six-foot distancing and how we can manage that in classrooms and buses and cafeterias and libraries. And it's, it's mind-boggling of all the things we've gone through in the last six to eight weeks. But we are going to try to follow CDC guidelines and try to keep the social distancing as, as much as we possibly can. And when we can't have the social distancing, if it has to be less than six foot, we'll, we'll use masks. So right now, from what I've heard from parents the most is they don't, they don't like the idea of their kids wearing masks. So we're going to practice our best to do the six-foot social distancing, which will lead into our instructional part of our plan. All employees will be responsible for disinfecting personal workplaces. We'll have alcohol-based hand sanitizers available throughout the schools. Cleaning sprays and disinfecting wipes will also be available. Teachers and staff clean frequently touched objects and surfaces, workspaces, classrooms. Custodians will clean and disinfect during designated cleaning times as well. So it'll be ongoing. It'll be a team effort like we all just got through talking. It's going to take everybody, it's going to take an army to keep, to fight these germs. And it is an invisible enemy. I think that's what the president calls it, the invisible enemy. We'll have, we'll have to fight it very hard. We'll have signage, we're going to have signage at the schools directing visitors and parents. Try to direct kids in a way that they'll keep the social distancing in effect. Personal protective equipment, PPE, will be available, face masks, face shields.
Go ahead. The, I got a text saying that they can't hear you very well.
Sorry.
Online.
Teachers and staff and students will, will all be required to wear a mask if we can't keep the social distancing six feet. So there, there may be times that we'll, we'll have to ask students to wear a mask. And that, that would probably be more like in transportation mode when we're in the, when they're on school buses. We'll do screenings of students. Health screenings will be given to, to students. We'll check temperatures and, and nurses. We're, we're, we have decided to hire some help for our nurses to help during this time. So we'll make sure all our children are, are being checked out. And I talked a little bit about transportation. Bus drivers will disinfect buses on, every route they, they complete, they'll disinfect the buses. Students will be given assigned seats. Students living in the same household can sit together on the buses. So that's another task that we're, Mike Shelton and I will be working on is figuring out who lives in the same household so they can go on the, on the bus together and sit in the same seat, which will help. Students are encouraged to wear face covers on the bus. And masks will be necessary when social distancing is not available. So we have protocols that are listed here for reopening school and the guidelines. And under those are safety measures, daily practices, and then the, the requirements for students and parents. So when we post this, you'll be able to go down these and, and read those, that what you're going to be asked to do as far as a parent, a student, or a visitor. And we will have those posted with this reopening. Now we get to the part you've been waiting on is how are we going to reopen schools in Bland County? The plan that we worked on is going to be easy to move from phase to phase. If we have to move back to Phase Two, the plan that's in place, we'll be able to do that pretty easily. If we move into a Phase Four, which I have no idea what Phase Four looks like, the plan will be able to create more leniency to what I'm going to present to you. So Bland County Public Schools will provide every student in pre-K through 12, a device to use at school at home. So preschool and kindergarten will get an iPad. And first grade through 12th grade will be issued a Chromebook. If a student does not have internet, lessons and activities can be uploaded or devices are provided on a thumb drive for access at home. Teachers will use Google Suites, Suites, what is that? I've never heard of that. Virtual Virginia, I've, I've list, I've heard of Google Classroom, so we'll use that. Other learning programs to provide them instruction. Hybrid learning, under Phase Three guidelines, Bland County Public Schools is planning on beginning the school year with a hybrid learning model. Students will be placed in Group A or Group B. They will follow the schedule below and the schedule's listed on. Students in Group A will attend school on Monday and Tuesday. And students in Group B will attend school on Thursday and Fridays. Students who reside in the same household will attend schools on the same days. Teachers will provide instruction on the days that students are in the buildings and then provide appropriate assignments for students to complete on the days they are not in the school. The Wednesday of the, of the week will be used for teacher workdays, deep cleaning of schools. We'll come in and clean as much as we can. I've talked to Ms. Arnie. She also thinks we'll do that after Friday's last student has left. So we'll do that twice a week, the deep cleaning. Disinfecting will take place every day, but the deep clean will take place twice a week, on Wednesdays and Fridays. Distance learning, if, if, you know, Bland County Public Schools will have to close in, in transition to distant learning, we're ready to do that. Students will take their devices home and they'll have devices so we can do that. Also, if parents don't want to send their kids to school, we will be able to provide Virtual Virginia, online learning, remote learning, and keep them enrolled in school.
And I think the county has opened up some hotspots, correct? They're setting some hotspots up in the county so that kids that may not have access to internet, they might be able to go to and, and download there, so if I'm not mistaken?
Yes, they have. We're, and we're, the technology committee, Ms. Tate's supposed to be compiling a list of those for us to publish on our website as well.
She is. And so I guess what I'm trying to say is parents will have some options. They can choose whether they want to begin school with distance learning, Virtual Virginia, et cetera, or do the hybrid plan that we have in place. So we don't want to lose our students. We want our students to have the best of the education. So we're going to be flexible and work with parents on whatever they choose to do. I, I hear from parents a lot. They're very concerned and they should be. And I hear from students, and students want to be back in school. For better part, they want to come back. They, they miss their friends and they miss the social, emotional part of school. So, so we move into the instructional equity. Assessments will be given in August and September to determine learning gaps for students. Teachers will use data from these assessments to plan remediation and new instruction. And you guys have heard me talk about this since this happened. We lost nine weeks of instruction and it hurts all kids, but I really worry about our K-3. They've lost some reading instruction and we, we will test for that. We've got tests in place. Pals testing will identify what areas we need to remediate. So we'll do a lot of remediation at first too, before we get into the curriculum. We're prepared to do that. We have, we have Title I to do that. Middle and high school will have daily remediation opportunities built into, into classes. I'm sure that they've missed some instruction too. I worry with them with the math classes and stuff. There's things that you, you can't, that you have to go back and, and teach in math. But that's what we're doing. Pacing guides, of course, will have to be adjusted. Special education teachers, parents, and other members of IEP teams and 504 processes must work together to meet needs for, for these students by providing accessibility and continuity of services for students with disabilities during hybrid or distant, distance learning. So that's, that's the plan I've laid out to you. We, we've got it built in here in attendance, a small attendance policy. But like Mr. Shepherd said, this is a plan. And this is not a plan that's supposed to be permanent. This is a, a, a plan that's going to get us right back into school and ease us in to the regular way we've been teaching school for the last 100 years. So I hope that, that you guys can approve this plan today so we can begin to plan because we have a lot of facility issues we have to tackle with bathrooms and cafeterias and bandrooms and things of this nature. We've got a lot of things with the signage areas in the offices, the nurse's office. We have a lot of areas we need to start working on immediately. So thank you for hearing me. If you have questions, I'll entertain those right now.
Let me do kind of a recap and tell me if I misunderstood anything. This plan is, is based on state staying in Phase Three, no cases related to our school system, and Bland County remaining relatively unaffected by, by the virus.
Yes, sir.
And under this plan, the current strategy is to start on August 13th.
Yes, sir.
And students will be broken up into two groups, Group A or Group B. One group will go Monday, Tuesday, the other group will go Thursday, Friday.
Yes, sir.
And this will be reevaluated at a minimum on a nine-week basis, but possibly even before that to see if adjustments need to be made. And social distancing will be practiced throughout this. And where we can't keep the six feet and we have to drop down to the three feet, then masks will be required.
The other thing with the grouping, I know there's going to be questions, well, how are you going to decide what kid goes into what group? That part I would like to leave up to our principals and guidance. They know the kids a lot better than I do. They, they probably know the family dynamics a lot better than we do too. So I would ask them to be in charge of grouping the kids in A or B.
And if parents for some reason have concern about the health of their children or they have somebody in their household that is very vulnerable, they do have the option to start the year with distance.
Yes, sir. And they could, they will still remain enrolled with us. And we'll just have to work it out with the guidance and the principals of how we schedule those. But they could surely start out the way, the way we did in March and April.
And Bland County Public Schools will provide all the PPE for students and staff.
Yes, sir.
Before we forward?
Meals, I, I kind of skipped over that because Kelly's working on that. But all those eligible for, for meals will receive those even on the days they're not here. And that could be either sending meals home on those days with, with last day they're here or it could be delivering meals like we did this summer. So we're going to make sure those kids eat like they would if they were here.
Yeah, because the Tuesdays and Thurs, Mondays and Tuesdays would be.
Yeah, they would eat here.
Yeah.
But the, the other group would not, so we would, we would want to feed them on those days too. Transportation is another issue. We'll, we'll try to estimate how many kids are going to be on each bus. We've had surveys on that to see how many kids are going to be needing transportation. We think we can accommodate the social distancing. But to be safe side, each driver will be given masks. And if it goes over the six foot, say to three feet, they'll have to have a mask.
Okay, do, can a motion to approve this approach moving forward?
I'll make a motion to approve the plan to return to school.
I'll second that.
Mr. Betri?
Four.
Mr. Bailey?
Four.
Ms. Puckett?
Four.
Mr. Sheppers?
Four.
Next item is school calendars. Like I said, the calendar that was approved by the board sometime back has a starting on August 13th. If for some reason we feel that delaying will be beneficial in how we can bring the students back to school, we do have a calendar that starts with school starting on September 8th.
You have the two, the two calendars that you have. One of them has school ending on June 4th and one has school ending on June 8th. So that's why you've got two choices of that. You can see, if you look at the original calendar we had, what had to be taken out if we start after Sep, after Labor Day.
So we will stick with the, starting on August 13th unless conditions change.
So we need to approve the calendar, correct?
We already approved the one.
We did, okay.
August.
We did back in budget time.
Okay, cool.
Okay, Superintendent Designee?
If you remember, when we did this back, gosh, March or so, we had Denise Tate as the Designee. Now that Laura has assumed the position Brian had, I think we'll, we need to put Laura as my Designee.
Motion to make Ms. Radford the Superintendent Designee?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Bailey?
Four.
Mr. Betri?
Four.
Ms. Puckett?
Four.
Mr. Sheppers?
We feel we probably need to have a meeting on the calendar for our next meeting because of what all is going on. The next meeting is the 11th of August. Everything goes as we currently have planned. They'll be starting school two days later. So we need to at least have one on the calendar before then to address issues that arise. I would probably suggest that sometime the last week of July if people.
That works fine for me.
Be available then.
That should be good.
Later portion of the week would work better for me if that's okay.
Like a Thursday or?
Yep, Thursday, 30th would be great if we can. That works out for everybody.
Okay, so this will be a special meeting by 30th, starting at 5:00?
We can just hold it at the board office?
Yes, sir.
And we can communicate further on that if everything is going smooth. Not too worried about everything going smooth.
I'll put that, I'll put that in the plan.
The. If you have a, a chance tomorrow, I think too, that VHSL will be having a special meeting to decide about what they're going to do for fall sports. And I think everybody's kind of interested to see what Dr. Han is going to present on, on tomorrow's meeting.
You heard anything, Tyler or?
When I sent you that, we were out of the MEB, they reduced out. And Hoga didn't allow us him, but we did hear from Tom Dolan right before this meeting and he encouraged us to go ahead and write the appeal. So we'll do that. We have to have it in by tomorrow, but he was encouraged for that appeal to happen.
You want to summarize that, Scott? So that people watching can hear, what was you said?
What has happened is the Bland County High School has asked to get out of the Mountain Empire District. And to do that, they had to request that through the district first, I guess. And you have two districts involved because they want to enter the Hoga Heeji district. Now, I think the Hoga Heeji district, all but one school accepted that. So it's right now, it's up in the air. They're going to, I think the high school's going to appeal that to see if we can get out of the Mountain Empire District. Is that correct?
Okay, we have some personnel issues. We have some personnel issues to approve?
Yeah, I'll make a meeting, I'll make a motion for a special meeting on July the 30th, Thursday, at 5:00 at the board office ambassador.
Second. Mr. Bailey?
Four.
Ms. Puckett?
Four.
Mr. Betry?
Four.
Mr. Sheppers?
Four. Okay, personnel? We have some people to hire?
Yeah, we need to fill the history position here that's open. I recommend that you hire the, Mr. Shirey for that position.
I'll make a motion for that.
Second.
Mr. Bailey?
Four.
Mr. Betry?
Four.
Ms. Puckett?
Four.
Mr. Sheppers?
Four.
We had the two new positions, the school assistant positions that we interviewed for. One at the elementary and one at the, at the, at the, at the Bland County High School.
The nursing assistant.
Yes. So, the, the recommendation of our panel was for the elementary school, we'd like to recommend Winnie Fogelson. Is that how you pronounce that? And for the high school, we'd like to recommend Larissa Hunt.
Do we want, you want one motion for both of those, or?
That's your...
I'll make a motion to accept both of those for the position.
Second.
Mr. Bailey?
Four.
Mr. Betry?
Four.
Ms. Puckett?
Four.
Mr. Sheppers?
Four. Okay, I think we're through with the action agenda. Motion to adjourn.
Make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second that.
Mr. Betry?
Four.
Four.
Ms. Puckett?
Four.
Mr. Sheppers?
Four. Thank you, everyone.